Can I go on the record here and just do the preliminaries, Mike?
Absolutely.
All right, we already, I think we have a... Okay, this is the DuPage County zoning Board of Appeals. We're here to signify that they consider filing petition 24-005 Overdale Inc. petition. This is a request for conditional use for open storage of equipment, open storage containers, and landscape materials. With exceptions for exception variation to reduce the south front yard setback from the required forty feet to approximately two feet. Another exception variation to reduce the east interior side yard setback from the required twenty feet to approximately one and a half feet. Exception to reduce the west interior side yard setback from twenty feet to approximately two feet. And an exception variation to reduce the north rear yard setback from the required twenty feet to approximately zero feet. That's a Downers Grove Township petition. Underlying zoning is I-1 light industrial and the property is about 1.63 acres. The matter was published in the Daily Herald on January 10, 2024. I have no comments or objections from any of the various authorities whom you've circulated the petition. Although Burr Ridge requests a little time to review and comment. I think at the end of the hearing I'll announce the schedule, which I believe will accommodate their concerns. Mike Roth represents the petitioner this evening. So I'll recognize Mr. Roth and I haven't introduced exhibits. I've got quite a number. Maybe you could start with that, but could we begin with you and are these your clients?
Yes.
We all raise our hands and be sworn in.
You just sound like more firm than testimony about to give it this clause in our hearing. I'll be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth. So help me God.
I do.
Yes.
Good evening, members of board. Mr. Chairman Carthol, thank you for your introduction. My name is Michael Roth. I do represent the petitioner here, which is Overdale Enterprises. With me tonight is Dan Patterson, who is an owner and the vice president of the company, Overdale Enterprises, and Linda Better, who is the corporate accountant. So the... I do have a stack of exhibits and I believe you would...
Let me just hit the spelling. Patterson is Owen or Ian or Owen. Owen. And is it Better?
He is Victor E-T-T-E-R.
Okay, thank you.
And Mr. Chairman, do you have color copies for everyone? I do have a packet that I provided that I made for everybody.
Shall we do?
You did. Okay. Then I would respectfully request that our packet, the exhibits be entered into evidence. Let me just say what they are first.
Okay.
So Exhibit One is a plan of survey with the legal descriptions. Exhibit Two is a site plan. Exhibit Three are vestal deeds for the two parcels that implies the subject property. Exhibit Four is four aerial photographs zooming into the subject property. Exhibit Five are six site photographs. Exhibit Six are three other site photographs that show the storage bins that are referenced in our case. Exhibit number seven is a copy of the as-built drawings for the work platform and the woodcutting equipment that is at the rear property line of the subject. Exhibit number eight is three neighbor letters of no objection, together with Mr. Patterson's verification. And Exhibit Nine is a narrative to the application that basically restates what I'm going to say tonight. The only, the copies that you have are identical to what I am submitting into evidence or offering into evidence. The only difference is that the verification of Mr. Patterson has in fact been authorized by me. That would be the only difference then.
Okay, well, we'll accept all of these. Let me just go over Seven. You said Seven is as-built?
It's an as-built drawing.
So is that, but it's not showing this?
It's an architectural drawing, excuse me. It's an architectural drawing of the platform. Sorry, I missed both. So.
Thank you.
So this property is 16 West 296 Jeans Road. The property is approximately 1.63 acres with 246 feet of frontage. And thanks. And this is on 246 feet of frontage on the east-west flank of Jeans Road. You may be familiar with it, but Jeans Road kind of snakes around in this industrial area. The property does consist of two parcels, lots, zoning lot, one zoning lot, and we have the pin numbers there for you. So as I mentioned, Exhibit One is a, is a survey of the subject property. The property is semi-developed with concrete block material bins and an unenclosed timber processing platform. And, and these are shown on Exhibit Two as well, which is the site plan of the subject property. You can basically see from the site plan that there's, there really aren't any structures on the property other than, other than the platform and the, and the woodcutting equipment. The property is zoned, county I-1. Mr. Patterson is going to speak to you tonight for a few minutes about the operations of the Overdale business. Basically, what this is, is it's a landscape material industrial use. This is not a retail operation. Nothing is being sold there. It's the delivery. And then as, as the workday commences, the, the landscape employees take off from the property with their material as necessary and with the equipment as necessary for their assigned landscaping work for the day. They park their cars at the site in the area where the trucks, the, the the material and equipment trucks were located overnight. The site's dimensions are 483 feet in length on the west boundary, 246 feet across the frontage, 198 at the, at the rear property line, and 339 feet along the eastern property line. Jeans Road, as you, as I know you know, Jeans Road was widened in 1992. And as a result of that, a widening of the road that shrunk the, the front setback for the subject property. So now the subject property in that sense is a legal non-conforming use. And you can see that on Exhibit, well, and particularly on Exhibit One, which is the plan of survey. You can see how along Jeans Road, the property actually extends 33 feet into the right way. So that was a result of the widening. The essential character of the area is industrial. In the Jeans Road, it's fairly heavy industrial area with all the adjacent and neighboring properties being industrial uses. There's a lot of equipment, storage, truck operations, repairs, and other landscaping. But more, more in the retail, well, not in the retail, but there are landscaping-related businesses there. There's a lot of dense storage in this particular area with processing and, as I say, truck, truck uses. The, the primary access to this industrial park is off of Illinois Route 83 from the west. It, it does lead into an exit area on the east end, but, but really not for, not for the type of truck traffic that needs to come in and go out from the industrial park. There are very few, if any, other areas in DuPage County that are zoned for landscape processing such as this. As Mr. Carthol mentioned, this is a request for a conditional use in the I-1 zoning district to allow for, for the landscaping, open storage, landscaping materials, and open storage without, without cover. Exhibit Four of your packet. Well, Exhibit Three would be, are the vesting deeds. Exhibit Four are the aerials. Again, you're probably familiar with this. You've got the packet. But as you, as you look through Exhibit Four, it more or less zooms in on this particular area. You can see that it is a heavy industrial area. I have noted the subject property, the Overdale property with the yellow, the yellow marker. It does abut the Displanes River on, on the south side. And Jeans Road, this property is on the north side of Jeans Road. The last of the...
So the south side of the property is immediate abutting the river? There's no property between?
There are properties, so, so abutting the property, the subject property on the south is Jeans Road. So Jeans, and this property is immediately on the north side of Jeans Road. And then there are other industrial uses on the south side of Jeans Road, and they back up to the Displanes River.
Oh, okay.
Okay. The, the last of those, Exhibit Four photos, is a larger, it's blown up aerial of the subject property, and you can see basically what's there, what's there now. As we move on to Exhibit Number Five, these are some photographs that we've taken of the subject property from the ground level. So you can see what's actually there. The front is, the frontage is mainly screened with vegetation. What you're seeing on the first page of Exhibit Five is just the entry to the subject property, and that's the only entryway to that property. The second page, as we mentioned, this is one of the, the major parts of this business operation is, as I said, it's the, it's the woodcutting and the wood storage. And so Dan is going to speak to you further about this. But basically what happens is there's, there's a lot of wood and log processing there. And then those, that firewood is then stored and delivered. And so during the course of the year, the season, you'll have a large inventory of firewood. And then as you move through the summer and into the later months of the summer or the fall, it's really moved away substantially as it's, as it's sold and delivered by the landscapers. The third page of Exhibit Five shows these material storage bins that I was talking about. And this, this is the east property line of the subject property. This is where all your landscaping purposes, there's screening materials, there's sand, and there's, and there's some gravel. And that is what the landscapers take away and what is delivered in large volumes from, as it is purchased. Exhibit Six, I'm sorry, next page is the same thing. In which this is also.
Yes.
Yeah. The next page, the second to the last page is also the, the storage areas. And then finally, the last page is a photograph of what the delivery trailer for the day-to-day deliveries would, would look like. It's that sort of thing. They're putting the landscaping equipment on the trailer and, and materials.
What do you deliver to? Residential or commercial or strictly residential?
About 90% residential.
Okay.
Exhibit Six, what I wanted to show with Exhibit Six, and that's a series of three photographs. You can see back behind, on the first page of Exhibit Six, back behind the trucks, the pickup trucks and the, and the delivery equipment are, are storage bins. And that is where the equipment at the end of the day goes. The lawnmowers, the, the tools, et cetera, they get put into those storage bins and they get locked. As a, not just a precautionary measure, but as a remedial measure, you know, there, there is, there can be problems with security in these areas. And so what Overdale does is it locks these storage bins and then it parks its vehicles up against the front of these, of these storage bins. The rear of these storage bins is up against the property line where there's a cyclone fence so that you can't get into the storage, the storage containers from the rear. You'd have to get in from the front. And, and the parking of the, the pickup trucks and the, and the equipment blocks anybody from getting in there and stealing their landscaping equipment. And so that's where, that's where the, the landscaping vehicles are parked overnight. As the, as the workers come in in the morning, those landscaping vehicles and the trailers are taken away and they go to their sites. And their own personal vehicles are parked in this very area. So this serves as not only the equipment storage area overnight, but it's the parking area for the employees. There's 12 spots for the, for the employees. And you basically are seeing that in the, in the three photographs. Unfortunately, the, the, believe it or not, the site has been cleaned up substantially. The pictures were just taken on a rainy wet day, so it, they didn't, they didn't look all they could, but... Oh, the, the applicant in this case doesn't propose any improvements. The applicant has been operating here since 2001, doing what I've described. And what is also memorialized in the narrative, which is Exhibit Nine to your packet, that also addresses the zoning standards. But there are no proposed additions, construction, or changes to the property. The existing site, as I said, is a non-conforming, not just due to the expansion, the widening of Jeans Road, but it's, it's non-conforming due to the location of the storage containers with regards to the rear property line. They are up against the cyclone fence. The storage bins that you've seen, the material storage bins that you've seen along the east side of the property, they don't meet the required setback. And as the volume of firewood is stored, there's, they don't, they don't meet the, the west setback, setback either. Dan is going to talk about the reasons why, why that's, that's the case. And in fact, I think at this point, maybe I would, I would offer Dan to testify to that. And then at the end, I can address the zoning standards, the conditional use standards, and try to answer any questions that you might have.
Okay, before you start, you say there are no additions or construction that's proposed.
Correct.
But the survey does not show the building, the structures that are part of, that are depicted on Exhibit Seven or shown on the site plan. So I'm the... Are you going to build some canopies or something?
No, there is a canopy on the, on the platform. There's a plant, there's a canopy there.
This is a 2001 survey?
That was the original one.
We gotta try to just go one at a time so we can have a good record.
I have a...
Why don't you guys confer amongst yourselves and sort out the survey?
Sorry.
No, that's not the new survey. Unfortunately, it's not here. One down by land bar comes. So one landmark did a site layout, anyone else who did the survey? So this is the original survey.
That was my friend in Scotland, because it's Bobby Burns' survey. Said Burne's supper.
Yeah, site plan's right here. That's your site plan.
Okay.
You can just print it out.
Oh, okay.
Print it out, the old survey.
Okay.
Have a new survey.
Mr. Chairman and members of the board, I have printed out the site plan that was, or excuse me, the survey that was in existence in, at the time the property was acquired. So my survey, my survey is dated 2001. There, it was re-surveyed in 2020, at the time that the architectural drawings were done.
Did you go up to 2023?
Yes.
But you don't have a hard copy of the...
I don't have a hard copy. I can, it was 10/20 of 23. I can pass this around if it would be of any value.
It won't really do any good. Does the site plan reflect essentially what the survey shows?
Yes, the, the two are consistent.
All right, well, then we'll give you leave to substitute Exhibit One with the current survey.
Got it.
And let me, let me just say, in order to accommodate Burr Ridge, I was going to set this for a March recommendation hearing and keep the record open until shortly af, shortly before that hearing. So the record will be open to some additional definition. That, that accommodates the request from Burr Ridge and resolves the need for you to replace the survey.
Okay.
So then just give us a narrative. So right now, your current use for some time is storage of various landscaping materials and sheds, et cetera. But the request for the setback variations reflects what you're already doing, is that right?
Yes.
So the zero feet, the one and a half feet, et cetera?
Correct. Okay, that's correct.
All right, that helps us understand.
That is correct.
And did you get a red tag or something?
There was a, there was a citation that was issued in this.
So that's why we're here?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. That's immaterial to us. We, you know, there's no penalty for having received a violation notice. I just was...
No, that is what precipitated this.
All right, then let, then perhaps we can take the narrative from Mr. Patterson.
The firewood, we stored along the west side of the property for it can season for about a year, year and a half. And what it is, is we stack it in rows, and sometimes they're like four or five feet wide rows. And then as that gets sold, then we replace it with the fresh wood. So that's why we need the variance along the west and the south side of the property, because we have it up along the property line now. And then along the east side, where I have aggregates brought in, I have mulch stored by semi trucks that are probably at least 60, 65 feet long. So they need that radius to come into the yard and make the turn to be able to dump everything. And then on the north side, the cargo containers, like he said, is where we keep our landscaping equipment, our maintenance equipment for doing maintenance on the homeowners' houses. And that's up against the property line. And then we back like our trucks there for protection for not being stolen. So that's why we'd need the setbacks to be allowed on the north side also.
If you were to, uh, glad, sorry. Yes, I was going to ask, if, you know, if you were going to have the 40-foot setback on the front and the 20-foot setbacks on the side, et cetera, would you even be able to operate?
No, I wouldn't be able to operate because it's going to shrink my yard down to so much. I would not have any room to go in and be able to turn around with all the, my trucks and equipment.
Well, has that always been the case since 2001? Or have you just outgrown?
No, right now we have enough room. We still have our mulch delivered by semis.
Yeah, you have enough room because you infringe on the setbacks on all sides of the property. Has that, you acquired the property in 2001. You began your business operations in 2001, is that right?
In that yard?
Yes. And did you infringe in the setbacks from the commencement of the operation of the business in 2001? Or has your business expanded so much that you're now using a greater portion of your property?
Business expanded.
Okay.
It wasn't, was the fire with there, though?
And then with respect to the security issue, I forgot which side, but you have storage sheds for your equipment. And you park your work vehicles in front of the front door of that shed to provide some security so somebody can't go in and open the door and take your stuff out. The back abuts some concrete I don't know what the hell they're called, concrete barriers or the back fence?
The back fence. And then also my trailers are open trailers, so all the equipment, like you saw in the exhibits, they get loaded in the open trailers. And then at night, that's when we take them out and we put them into those containers.
Okay. Mr. Roth, back to you.
Okay. So with that, if there are any other questions, I'd be, we'd be happy to answer them. Otherwise, I'd like to address the standards.
Yeah, well, no, I think you should address the standards. Did you address hardship, unique circumstance, or practical difficulty in your narrative? Which, because this is a conditional use and you're asking for exceptions rather than variations, you know, that my question may be somewhat academic. Well, I just want to know if you addressed it in your narrative.
I didn't use the word hardship, no. I did not. What I was, what I was attempting to do was establish what is being done, what has been done, and how, if, how we couldn't operate the business if we had to make setbacks.
Okay, is this your narrative?
It is.
It is. Oh, it's marked as Exhibit Two? All right, do you want to go over that?
It was, the, the, what happened, members of the board and Mr. Chairman, what happened was when I submitted the application, I submitted what you have. What I have, what I have prepared is slightly different, but I will go through it. I will go through it. So petitioner does seek a conditional use approval with the bulk setback deviations or exceptions from the standards to allow the continued use of, of the property. Specifically, the conditional use approval would be pursuant to 371413, conditional uses, and this being for open storage of landscape materials and equipment and, and the, and the platform, work platform. There are four exceptions, or variations, if you will. First is to reduce the south front yard, the front yard setback from the required 40 feet to approximately two feet. And, and the plot shows that and where, where the property line is. The second is to reduce the east, the interior side yard setback from 20, required 20 feet to approximately one and a half feet for the material storage bins. The third is to reduce the west interior side yard setback from the required 20 feet to approximately two feet, or the firewood stacking. And the fourth is to reduce the rear, the north property line, the rear yard, setback from the required 20 feet to approximately zero feet. The wood processing equipment permanently attached to the processing platform doesn't approach into the rear yard that necessitates the setback relief. The platform canopy that is there now does extend to the property line so that it briefly adds 0. And the wood processing equipment and the permanently attached to the processing platform that also encroaches 2 feet into the required 20-foot side yard, that would be the west side yard necessitating the setback relief. I would like to add that Mr. Patterson did circulate the Exhibit 8 letters to his neighbors. He personally did so. And they signed the letters that are your Exhibit 8 in front of Mr. Patterson. He received them personally from them and as the letters indicate, his neighbors have no objection to his request for zoning relief here. So our proposal, I'll get to exactly what the... I'll read the standards in. I'll read the standards in. But the applicant does propose that the zoning relief that I just mentioned be subject to the following additional conditions and limitations. And that is that the conditional use zoning relief be tied to the approved site plan, which is your Exhibit 2, that all exceptions that are approved with this, the grant of the conditional use would be for the existing structures and improvements as described and detailed in these exhibits and will not inure to future development or the redevelopment of the subject property. It would be for Overdale Enterprises as it is. And that the applicant agrees the site plan review, if necessary, for access control and signage and any other compliance with county standards per Section 371004D. That's the section that allows the open landscaping materials and storage in the I-1 zoning district. She has a conditional use. So I would submit to you that the exceptions will satisfy the standards under 1413.5 of the zoning code. Basically, the same standards that are set forth for the variances. Although, as Mr. Carfall mentioned, there is the hardship issue for variances. But this would be an exception to the conditional uses. And if granted, the conditional uses and the acceptance, first, well, they will not impair any adequate supply of light or air to the adjacent properties. There are no new alterations. It doesn't impair any light or air to those properties now. Those properties are heavy industrial areas that, where there's debts, debt storage as well. It will not, secondly, increase the hazard, any hazard, fire or other dangers to those properties. This property is fully fenced. And again, there are no new alterations or improvements that would result from these requested exceptions. There have been no threats to fire or hazard through the 21 years that Overdale's been operating, as they have. Third, it won't diminish or have any effect on the value of lands and buildings throughout the county. As I say, nothing new is going to go here. Fourth, it will not induly increase or have any effect on traffic congestion in the public streets or right-of-way. Gene's Road is fairly heavily traveled for truck traffic. The continued operation, as is, isn't going to change the volume of traffic in any way from what has been going on for a long time. Next, it will not increase the, any potential for flood damages to adjacent properties, again, because there isn't going to be anything impervious that would be added to this property. And there won't be any excavations. Next, the grant of the conditional use and the exceptions will not cause any public expense, the public to incur any expense for flood protection or rescue relief, again, for the reasons that I've said. And then finally, it would not otherwise impair the public safety, health, comfort morals, or general welfare of the county. The use of this site with current setbacks does not impair the public health, safety, comfort morals, or welfare of neighboring properties of the county in general. And it is consistent with the uses and setbacks of surrounding properties. I think you're familiar with this area. What is, the operations here are very consistent with all the surrounding neighbors. It doesn't justify violations of code, but it does indicate what the character of the area is and how the continued operation is not going to impair the general welfare of the county. And then finally, the subject site is approved as it's going to be approved. Nothing, no new alterations or no new improvements are going to result from these exceptions. And so the grant of the relief requested would not impair the general welfare. So with that, I would respectfully ask for your support.
Mr. Patterson, is there asphalt anyplace on the property?
The asphalt grindings on the property?
Is there asphalt pavement?
Grindings after time kind of hardens up. So we'd have to say yes, then.
It's all pavement.
No, it's not pavement or anything.
The site plan says in two places, gravel and asphalt pavement. It's confusing because the photographs don't look like there's any asphalt. So could you clarify that with your additional survey information? And then, so there's wood cutting on the back corner of the property. And there's wood storage, wood pile storage on the west side for a considerable length of the property. Is that the only places that you store firewood?
I also stored along the south side of the property. Because there's a little line that's proposed additional firewood storage. Because when they came out to shoot this site plan, I usually have it all along the whole south side by the fence. But that was all gone when I did the survey. So I only had like little piles of wood on both ends.
Well, what are you going to do in the future? Where are you going to store wood?
I would like to have it stored along the south side also.
That's not shown on the site plan either.
Where it says proposed additional firewood storage?
Well, maybe I'm looking at the wrong. I'm looking at Exhibit 2, which is the site plan, is that right? I don't know what this is.
That's, that was the architectural. This was our Exhibit 2?
Yeah, I'm looking at it. Oh, I see, right down here, okay. I'm sorry, that...
40 full seconds.
Here, it's right here, down.
It's already parallel to Gene's Road.
All right, so you're on the, on the south side where the proposed additional firewood storage is. That abuts Gene's Road? Is that right?
That's...
Not the road, but the screen. It's on the inside of my fence.
Well, I know it's on the inside, on your property. It's not on the road. But it's, what is adjacent to your property at that point is Gene's Road, is that right? Looks like it to me from the...
Yes.
If we could refer to the first page of Exhibit 5?
There's a photograph that looks like this.
Yeah, okay. What about it?
So, so you can see the fence, the cyclone fence gate. And it would be right on the other side of that gate and on the other side of that vegetation. That's where there needs to be a gate.
What are those trees, are those evergreens or something?
No.
Just deciduous shrubs.
All right, and then on the west side, who is your neighbor to the west?
King's Landscaping.
Well, I presume that you sell firewood that is subject to being burned. So I mean, I have a little bit of concern that you have a zero setback in two areas of the property where you store firewood without any, you know, fire retardant or firewalls or fencing that's protective. So I mean, that implicates one of the conditional use standards and variation standards. So it's an observation. You can comment on that or reserve your comment. Let me see if there's any questions from any members of the... Does anyone on the board have any questions, Mr. Murphy?
I just had one, is there, are you the only contractor that works out of that yard or is there several contractors?
I'm the only contractor.
Only contractor, yes.
Mr. Ketter?
Hey, just a quick question. The wood cutting equipment is purely to cut logs. Is that correct?
Yes.
And the logs are purely used for firewood. How does that come in under the use as a landscaping facility?
Well, the landscaping business is provided to, I mean, it's a landscaping business that provides the firewood as part of its landscaping business.
But that doesn't answer my question. Anybody could say, "I have a painting company, but I supply logs." I have this. You're, it's a conditional use to store equipment. The equipment is for landscaping of outside. The storage containers hold your landscaping equipment. You have landscaping materials. But then you want variances for the cutting, extended storage logs. I don't see the justification. It seems like even with your testimony, you've outgrown this property and I think you've grown into double use.
So the standard is, the standard for the conditional use is open storage? It's open storage.
Well, wait a minute.
Any?
It doesn't say that. Read what you filed for. Open storage of equipment, comma, equipment storage containers, comma, and landscape materials.
Well, I would consider that, I consider the land, the firewood and the landscaping materials. But if you don't consider it to be landscaping materials, it's still, the firewood is still permitted under the conditional use category.
Well, wait a second. Are you, is your point that the cutting of logs is different than the storage of landscape materials? I mean, the...
That's, that's part of it.
Firewood is some, I guess generally, landscape materials. But the cutting of logs is either incidental to this operation or it's a separate operation.
It seems like it's grown into a separate operation. They need more room for the logs. They're selling more. They have, it's cutting down and they're turning and everything else. That's my point.
Okay.
Well, again, just for the record, the, this, the conditional use that's allowed in this zoning classification is open storage, any open storage of manufactured goods, which I consider to be the cutting, the cut-up logs, as well as equipment or materials, including the storage of commercial vehicles and equipment, which need not be enclosed. I think that that has to be read consistent with the fact that a permitted use in the I-1 is a landscape contractor's office and storage yard. So we have a permitted use for the landscape, the landscape contractor's office and storage yard. And then the code goes even further to allow this conditional use. So I mean, if the, the, the firewood would be the manufactured goods resulting from the landscaping operation. So I think that that is, I think, and I don't know, maybe Paul can speak to this, but I don't know what other, what other, I don't, there are any other classifications in the, in the, in DuPage County that would allow for the storage of the firewood that's going to be sold.
Well, what we have, so the landscape yard is a permitted use. The conditional use is required because you have open storage
Right.
of various things incidental to the landscape business. Separate question is whether the cutting of logs is incidental to the operation of a landscape business, the storage of the equipment, or somehow a secondary use. And we'll leave that for debate. Yeah.
I, I see where Mr. Ketter's coming from, but I think you're slicing the salami really thin here on this.
And the logs?
You know, it's just like, it's part, I mean, you're not going to have a business just selling fire logs and doing that. You're not going to make enough money. So I, you know, I want DuPage County businesses to thrive. It seems like it's in the right area. And it is the right area. And I mean, I don't see this a problem with this. Because you can't just take wood logs and pass them on to a, you know, our area, our homeowners to burn in our fire pits. You know, you're not going to go big, you got to cut them, so.
You don't, so you, you, I don't understand your point.
I don't have a problem.
With, a problem with what? The fact that there may be an incidental use or a separate use?
It's not a separate use.
Okay.
I don't believe it's a separate use.
Well, that's why I said we'll resolve that later. Okay, anybody else, Mr. Moran?
Yeah. So the ASB bill was for the log cutting and splitting, correct?
Yes.
So they're cutting and splitting in the back there?
Yes, it's already there, it's existing.
So your landscaping company, from what I'm getting at, is also horticultural. You're, you're taking down trees?
No, we don't, we don't remove trees.
So you have another company dropping off the logs?
Yeah, one tree company, it brings us the logs.
From a harbor.
Just drops off the logs and then cut them.
So it's, yeah, I, okay, see. And then on the pictures of the north side, those are just storage bins, correct?
Yes.
Are they movable?
They're cargo containers that are set on the ground.
Yeah, so they're movable? They're not anchored into the ground?
No, not anchored, no.
Okay. And just, are they ventilated?
Yes.
Okay, that's, because when you said storage of gasoline motors.
Yeah, they're vented.
Because when I looked, I'm like, ooh. And then you got firewood all over, so I was like, ooh. So yeah, so they're kind of like this, but they are movable?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, anybody else?
I had one more I didn't get finished. I tracked it. I'm not anti-business. I'm not running for any office. So I'm just trying to read the ordinance and see if it fits. The question I have, it's storage trailers, those cement bins where you have gravel and everything else, those aren't attached to the land per se.
No, they're not.
So they could be pulled in to make, if you needed to make the setbacks?
Well, yeah, I mean, they, they could be. Two, two things, though. One is, you looked into the, the option of moving, moving them, which is problematic. But also, when you move them in, you don't have the space for the trucks, the semis, to get in, back up, make their deliveries, and then get out. As you, as you move them in the 20 feet, if that were to happen, he can't operate. They can't, they can't get their trucks in and out and make those, make the dumps and deliveries. And the pickups, then, from the smaller trucks, is problematic because I think you can see the size of those trailers, the equipment trailers. That's where the material also goes. So it's, it's a, it's a fairly tight operation. And it's difficult to move these larger trucks around with, with compliance with the setbacks.
And I understand your testimony, since you've been there over time, your, your increase in business has caused you to make that smaller.
Yes.
This is pretty straightforward. Got a landscape yard, his business has increased. And he's encroaching into the setbacks up to a foot or 0 feet or a foot and a half on all sides of the property. Question is, do we grant that as a conditional use? Okay, so is there anything else?
One last thing.
Sure.
And that is that if the issue of the firewood being 2 feet from the property line is something that is truly problematic for you, then, you know, we could, we could move the, we could move the firewood in, in a bit. Can't move it into the 20 feet. Doesn't work. But, you know, we could probably get it in 5, maybe 10 feet.
I don't, I don't, when I see this, and I'm looking on Google Maps, which is where you got those pictures.
Yeah.
Because it's to the T. It's not the firewood that's the problem. I think it's for those bins.
The bins, yeah, the bins are very close. Okay, yeah, the bins are very close.
Firewood burns, well, the stuff that's in the bins probably includes findable materials.
The bin?
Just aggregates like gravel and sand, stone.
The storage bins.
The storage bins, not, not the, not the air.
Ones that you block.
Yeah, it's just what's on the north side that-
It is my, yeah, lawnmower.
Okay. So the firewood looks clean.
Alright, well, let's uh discontinue the debate um and set, save that for the recommendation hearing. I think we're concluded for the evening, Mr. Roth.
Thank you. Um, I'm gonna, I'm gonna submit, I'm gonna submit a uh, a correct um survey.
Yeah, you could submit whatever you want, because the record is entirely open.
I'm saying, I'm gonna-
But we would like you to withdraw one and replace it with the current survey that you indicated. Um, so we will continue until our, our seven, March seven recommendation uh meeting, and that will be held in this room at five-thirty. Um, can we request that by March first, you um submit the additional materials-
Oh, of course.
So that we have a chance to review them?
Of course.
Great, thanks very much. We'll close the hearing for this evening.